I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All other members want you to record session of Goldendale City Council from July Connie? Do we have? Well, I think we've received notices for Lauren.
No, and Lauren, but I didn't get anything about Steve.
Steve?
I did, yeah.
Steve.
Oh, you got one for Steve.
I'm going to excuse the three council members.
Okay.
One second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Lauren Maker, Steve Johnston, and Filberto Ontiveto from tonight's council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We don't have a public hearing tonight, but we do have an agenda and consent agenda to be agreed by the council. So we have a motion.
I saw a move there. Approve the agenda.
And the consent too, or just the agenda?
Oh, well, no, both, yes.
Okay. Sorry. I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda and consent agenda for this council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have two presentations tonight. The first one is from Susan Kelsey, and it has to do with the replacement of sign decals on Observatory Hill trails. Yes, please come up.
Good evening. I'm Susan Kelsey. I live here in Goldendale. And in the presentation, or the packet that I gave you, it was incomplete. So I have an addendum with the newer costs and also a picture of the decals that we are looking at to replace. And that's my husband Gordy.
Thanks, Gordy.
We're a team. So I'm here to talk about the Observatory Hill Trail system that was planned and built by several organizations and Mr. Christensen and the Eagle Scouts. A number of years ago, they done a fantastic job. I consider it a treasure of Goldendale and Clickitat County. And we want to build on that. And when I say we, we call ourselves the Observatory Hill Walkers. And you can see some of the ladies back there. We've been doing it for more than 10 years. And we started out on the road, going up to the gate, touching the gate, and coming back down. And then we transitioned over into the trail system. And we do it year round. Some of us do it on snow. And it's just a beautiful seasonal treasure that I think we need to upgrade. And we have expanded out. We're always encouraging the community as well as our families, our grown children who come to visit have walked on there, and then grandkids have walked on there. So it's highly used. And the past couple of years, unfortunately, we've seen a deterioration of the decals and missing decals, new social trails and junctions that are not marked. And I've run into a number of people who have asked me for directions and have shared that they're confused by our trail system, which leads me to this moment. We would like to see this council and this community treasure to be maintained now and for future generations. I do have a question. After the trail system was built, was this put on the city budget for maintenance?
Very minor amount of maintenance. When we first built it, we made the three trails, but maintenance because of time and because, not so much because of cost, because it really wasn't costly, but just we had to spend more of our time on the main parks in town.
Okay. And, well, I hope to address that and encourage you to consider putting that on your budget. In the report that I submitted this past week, you'll see picture number one, which is this right here. What? No?
Oh. I'm watching the zoom.
Anyways, it's a GIS map that my daughter produced for us. And on there, you'll see the number of posts marked. And at that time, it was approximately 88 posts, but since then Gordy and I have gone up there and updated that. But that was our first venture up there. The second picture that I have for you is actually the map created at the kiosk at the parking lot. And you'll see on there that there's three distinct trails. There's the green, which is easy, the blue, which is intermediate, and the black, which is difficult. The third picture is a picture of the post with deteriorated decals. And what I didn't take a picture of were a post that had missing ones, but most of them are worse than this. Anyways, the next picture is the city sign that you have. You have a couple of city signs up there with the posts piggybacked on that. I just do want to point out that you have a city sign missing that says yield to cars. So on the, on the road up to Observatory, there's a couple of crosswalks, and you have city signs on both sides saying for the walkers to yield, and one of them is missing. So I just wanted to point that out. And then the next picture is a product that we're asking for you to consider purchasing is a carcinite placard. And Gordy has actually an example of that right there.
Gordy, could you bring it up?
Sure. This was a casualty of a snowplow, but anyway, they're basically a plastic post that the stickers would adhere to, just like the ones that we put on or the county or city would put on. So the old ones were just stapled to the wood post, and they just fell off.
So these, like he was sharing, these carcinite posts, which is a hard durable plastic placard that the new decals would adhere to, then we would take that placard and screw it into the existing wood post so that you wouldn't have to replace those. And that's what's going to make it last a long time. And then the last picture I just gave you, of course, this is one of our vendors who sent us examples of directional arrows on the trail system. I don't think you can go wrong with a narrow. Either you're going to take a left, right, or go straight. So I thought that was a pretty practical way of addressing those issues. So those are the pictures. Go ahead and turn to section nine. It's called Cost Estimate. And you can see all the products that I've listed that I'm asking for a purchase of, the amount as well as the number of the product, and then the cost that it would come out. And then if you turn it over, you'll see the summary. At that time, two of the vendors that actually replied of the three, only one has come through with pricing, and that's why I have the addendum that I just turned in. So the cost estimate from Gorge Inc. from White Salmon for durable outdoor decals at about 246 decals was $488. So if you look right below that with the subtotal, the 5% contingencies, and then the tax, the estimated total cost of materials is $1,616.19. I'm still waiting for Columbia Graphics from Hood River to give me what they have. I haven't seen any of the decals. This is done via email as well over the phone, so I would prefer to go and look at them to make sure about the product. And remember that the number that I just gave you is an estimate. And if the city will provide the materials needed for the trail signage maintenance, my husband Gordy has volunteered to install all the signage. So we're not asking the city to labor at that. We're willing to do that. We're also asking the city council to consider our request to maintain the signs this year before the art festival, which is planning an event using the trails in October. We're also asking the city to add a sign at the trailhead parking lot prohibiting overnight parking. We have noticed there are people camping up there in the parking lot overnight, and last week it was a person there for a week. So I just don't think that's a safe, safe thing to be doing. So I want to thank you for considering our proposal. As time, as time is a factor, I would hope that the council would get back to me as soon as possible. Are there any questions?
Larry Merkin.
We have, we set aside $10,000 in Caprally for parks.
Okay. Do we need a motion to do this?
Things like that, but this is, of course, a Caprally, could be a Caprally project.
Do we need a motion to do this? Or is this like?
I think it'd be nice to have a motion because it would give us direction, good direction on making that happen. If you want the project to move forward more quickly, then let's have a motion and give us direction to move forward and work with the group to get.
So on that motion, what amount would I?
Well, I would, I would bump the number up to an even number of 2,000.
Okay.
We just have them, you know, make sure that we can have the invoices for the, for the materials that you're going to buy. And then you'd work with Connie or Sandy and think we could work together to get those things ordered.
I didn't think it was going to be this easy.
Well, as far as the maintenance that you mentioned, were you talking about maintenance of the signage or maintenance of the trail that you'd like to see?
So the trail, as far as I understand, is maintained by people walking on it. So out of the three, the black one is the most overgrown. You know, it's a possible volunteer project. I don't know that in the springtime, somebody needs to go up there and knock down a lot of the weeds that are, you know, surrounding the trails so that you can see the trails a lot better.
That was a question I was going to ask about the black. I didn't know how much maintenance, future maintenance would take to upgrade it towards a pass, possible or whatever. So I didn't know if that's something maybe the council could put in a little bit of money for next year.
I would love that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, we think about that, right? Yeah. But for now, we can get the ball rolling on the amount requested to get that signage fixed.
I'd like to make a motion to purchase the new signs and then not exceed $2,000.
It's been moved and seconded to purchase the signage equipment, the decals, the posts, all those items needed for updating and renewing the Goldendale Observatory Hill trails. Are there questions or comments before I call for a?
I did have something to add. Sorry.
That's all right.
My husband wants to talk about some future things. We're not going to ask for the council to vote on tonight, but something to keep in mind. Is that okay? Should you do the motion?
And then if we open for a call. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed.
Thank you.
Just one thing that we could think about for the future too is on the, at the kiosk, it would be nice and helpful for people that aren't familiar with the trail to have a small map to take with them potentially. And that might be something that I could work on drafting something up with my daughter. She's a GIS person and, and then bring it back for you guys to look at if that's something that you'd be interested in.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay. Thank you.
I think on the Observatory Hills project, the trails, I don't know that any community the size of Goldendale and the entire country, probably the hemisphere, that has an observatory hill, much less that, and then the trails on top of it. It's a real jewel, just as you said, absolute jewel.
Well, Mayor, while we're at it, Susan brought up the need of a sign that says prohibiting overnight parking. Can we get on that too? That's pretty important.
Those two guys right there.
Oh.
Yeah. There is a sign posted down low, there's no off-road parking, but the camping ones and stuff will be something that we need to work on. But, you know, too, is the, we've had myself and another officer on two separate occasions have caught people parking or kind of day camping up there. One other officer, Kenny, contacted a person that was actually camping and stuff was told to leave. But what I will do is I will enforce or inform my staff that to make nightly checks of the trailhead and put a stop to this. But getting clear signs saying no overnight parking slash camping would be good too, but we don't allow that. But we'll work on that for you, okay?
And I think it might be a good idea for the council members to be on the lookout for an Eagle Scout anxious to clear out the black trail. I've been on one or two of those trails. It's not an easy task. Thank you, Kelsey family. Thank you very much. And we'll work with you, keep you informed, and we'll probably have you come in when we get everything finalized so that it fits what you asked it for.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you ever so much. The next presentation on the agenda will be given by Dennis Toomey, and this is the Trauma Intervention Program of the Northwest. The initials for it, TIP-NW. Thanks, everyone. Mr. Kim.
Thank you. I'd also like to bring with me Christina Hensbury, who is one of our volunteers up here in the gorge, and she's helping me come up and talk to folks here. Anyway, thank you, Mayor and City Council. As the mayor pointed out, we are with the Trauma Intervention Program, and everybody calls us TIP, and short for Trauma Intervention Program. We're a volunteer group, and we've been a volunteer group for a long time in the Northwest. We're celebrating our 30th anniversary this year. And the essence of what we do is we respond when we're requested to the scene of unexpected deaths. And that could be a motor vehicle accident. It could be a house fire like we responded to up here not too long ago. Any variety of deaths where the medical examiner would be called on scene. So unexpected deaths is really the focus here, and that ranges, I've been doing this for 27 years. And in those 27 years, we've responded to pretty much everything you can think of. And that includes, now bear in mind, I'm from Portland, so I'll set that up to say I came a ways to get here, but I just wanted to lay this out. And I only said that because we deal with a fair amount of homicides down there, suicides, SIDS deaths, motor vehicle accidents, drownings, pretty much anywhere that there's a traumatic death, the first responders, police, fire, medical, or the medical examiner will call us out to assist the people on scene that are being traumatized by this event. And those could be the family. It could be witnesses. It could be people who are somehow involved. I know in automobile accidents, sometimes we get called out to assist the people that were maybe in the other car, and they're pretty shook up. So that's kind of the big picture of what we do. And what we do is work, we only go when we're requested, and that's a key part of it. We don't just show up. We only actually wait until we're invited. And our goal in Goldendale with our current group of volunteers is to be able to be here within the hour of getting it requested. And you think that's doable, don't you, Christine?
Yeah.
Yeah. So a little background on TIP, this thing was started by a mental health professional about 37 years ago. And what he was doing, he worked for his county, and he saw a lot of people being referred to him by various departments like the courts. And he was dealing with people who had suffered a traumatic loss early in their lives, and they'd never gotten any help. They'd just been left to kind of their own devices. You know, it might be that somebody at home had a heart attack and died, and they were on the floor, and the first responders had to get back in service. Another call came in, and they get left alone with their loved one. And they hated that and really wished for something better. And what happened when we came along in our area in the Northwest was a lot of people realized that this was not only a help to the families and the people who were experiencing this trauma, but also to the first responders so that they didn't feel like they were leaving somebody alone in difficult circumstances. The whole thing started in, like I said, about 37 years ago. And what happened was there was a TV story done about it. And that TV story was watched by a guy in the Portland City Council who used to be a Portland city policeman. And with that kind of background, he knew what this meant and what could achieve and the experiences he'd had. So he called the guy, and he said, would you like to have that here in the Northwest? And they got together, and they got a little bit of funding. And that was when we started 30 years ago. We started out pretty slow, like we're starting out pretty slow in the gorge, you know, a call here and a call there. And the more it got used, the more it caught on, and the more people were comfortable using it because the experience was good. One thing I should say about the volunteers that we have, and in Portland, we have over 200 volunteers. We respond to about 3,000 calls a year, and our average response time is about 20 minutes. And we can't promise that for Goldendale right now, but we're shooting for that. And we're going to be recruiting people up here to volunteer. I think, who else do we have on this side of the river?
We have some people in White Salmon, Trout Lake, the Dells. And I recently have had a booth at Golden Days. So I have a couple of people that are also interested from Goldendale. We have a training academy coming up at the beginning of August. Our volunteers undergo 60 hours of training and three months of field training, everything from working within the 911 system to personal safety and what to say to people following a tragedy. So.
Yeah, thank you. So anyway, we're trying to get more people here and be able to get to scene faster. I know Chief Hunzaker utilized us when you had your house fire. Your home was that experience, too?
That was great. I mean, in fact, she arrived about an hour after we got everyone there and dealt with the family. The family in this incident was very helpful, very worked well with law enforcement. And then when she got on scene, you know, she started helping them, and that takes a burden off, not a burden, but takes stress off the officers and the firefighters of the scene and that they're being taken care of so we can focus strictly on the scene itself and make good. So it was an invaluable thing to have, you know, it's there. I mean, so it was really great.
Yeah, there was children present, so I was able to provide them some toys, give out some water, help the people to really start normalizing the grief process because each sibling was a little bit different personality. And then we started to see them to be able to support each other. And what we know with trauma is that if somebody is properly supported in those first few hours, it really helps the long-term narrative of their healing process, and they're able to build that resiliency way better than if they don't have that initial somebody to support them and attune to what's going on.
One thing I wanted to touch on, I see a man here in a Goldendale fire shirt, and the chief already knows this, but one thing that we do when we recruit volunteers is we do an in-depth background investigation by law enforcement. We take their fingerprints, we have a law enforcement agency do a background check on them to make sure they're the kind of people that you would like to have come into your host, into your house if that's the situation. We also provide extensive training, over 60 hours of classroom training, training from first responders, training from our trainers. And I can promise you, in the 27 years I've been doing it, I've never heard anything great reviews about how prepared these people were to go out on calls when they graduated from the training. And then they go through three months of probationary period going on calls with experienced volunteer before they're ever allowed to go on a call by themselves. So we put a lot of effort into making sure that the people are well-qualified and they're well-trained and that they understand that they're invited guests, they're not in charge of anything, they're there at your request, and they're there to follow your direction in terms of who the clients are and kind of getting a big picture of what's going on. So if there's any questions, I think we can entertain that now.
Yeah, and I would like to add that we also love partnering with school principals, with chaplains. Last week, I met with the American Red Cross Regional Director. I think she goes up here so that TIP could be there in case of a wildfire to self-set up emergency preparedness, you know, shelters. Because oftentimes, depending on the level of the emergency, they need to fly people in, and that might take a day or two. So in that meantime, we have a group of 20-plus volunteers who are ready, willing, and able to be there if there was a tragedy at the school and the children needed to process, and it was something that was more larger scale than maybe the school counselors could do. We have been in schools and set up those rooms so that the children can come in and out and have somebody to also talk to.
Now you know why she does.
I think you do a very good job. I'm curious, 60 hours of training now, is this online or?
No, in person.
Where do you go to do?
Our office in our training situation is in the Portland Fire Department's Training Force. Our office is actually in that building. And so we use their facilities to train people. So it's a pretty good setup for being able to train people. And in the future, we're going to be having another training up in this direction. We don't have a date figured out for that yet, but when we have a sufficient number of people to train, I think we'll be.
Yeah, last year, we did have a training in Hood River.
Yeah.
So we are hopefully going to have another one.
I just forgot a really key point. We're calling this the Gorge Response Team, and that's because we started about three and a half years ago. Everything's measured in COVID, pre-COVID, and post-COVID. This was pre-COVID, and we started a group in Skamenee County. And it's doing quite well. And then COVID came along, and things kind of hardened down. And we've got that up and running again, but we've added in Clickitat, we've added in Hood River, and Wasco County. So we now have people trained on both sides of the river that are able to respond to either side of the river, and it just kind of enhances our base of volunteers.
I'm going to hand out our Columbia Gorge Resource Guides. So this is specific to our region.
Yep.
This is something we leave at call scenes with the people we're working with. It's kind of a.
There's some more cards for the.
Catch all.
And if anybody from the audience wants an information card? Our website has these resource guides on them also, if anybody's interested.
So back to any questions? Does anybody want to know anything or have any thoughts about it? Does anybody want to know anything or have any thoughts about it?
I have a question on the funding.
Yes.
What is yours source?
Currently it's being funded by Beacon Health and they're doing a lot of mental health work for the state of Washington. And we requested a grant to be able to provide this program in the gorge and they were kind enough to under it. All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate the time.
Thank you very much.
Appreciation for both of the presentations we had tonight. They were very useful and very productive. We'll go on now to department reports and we'll begin with the Goldendale Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief. Community Days, as everyone always went very well, a lot of people. The parade went well, hour and 10 minutes to get everyone through the parade. So we had a lot of calls over the weekend, so, but nothing major. So I think it went very well. My last council meeting, our caseload was at 1,634 cases. As of today, we're at 1,00807, so we've had 173 cases in the last 11 days. So we're busy, we're really busy. So, but we're getting business taken care of. The background investigation started for the two entry-level candidates that we've had, so that's in the process. And Observatory Hill, I did discuss it with Doug Fram, the head of Public Works, Washington State Fish and Game gave us the wild animal warning signs, the bigger ones. And we're having those posted up at Observatory Hill, Econe Park and over by the pool area after our recent bear in the city that kind of went everywhere. But just to give people, remind people that there are wild animals out there, they're very dangerous and how to avoid them. So there's one already posted up at the trailhead where the people park for the walk-in, the trails on Observatory Hill, but it's just a laminated paper one, but it's right there at the map stand, so it's very visible, so. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Go here from the Goldendale Fire Department.
Fire Department, I don't have much to report, Mayor, I'm just filling in for mail here, but well, like the chief from police said, Community Days went well. We're not quite as busy as they are, but we have averaged a call a day this last week for the volunteers, getting a decent response, so we're happy to see that. And that's really all I got, I don't have much, so if there's any other questions for me.
Thank you, Steve. Any comments or questions, Steve? Thank you. Excellent. And now we'll hear from Pat Bunyan, the director of the Public Works Department.
So the Public Works crew has been out crossing alleys and, you know, they were obviously getting some help setting up Community Days. And buyer streets still keep them very busy. Contractor, because of so many lines crossing at weird angles up there, the contractor keeps breaking water lanes. They broke one Friday, well, several last week, but Friday and one today as well. They're almost complete. They have one more service connection to install tomorrow. And once that's connected, we'll be doing the chlorination, chlorinating the system and then once we drain that off, we'll go for bacteria samples to make sure they pass. And if they pass, we'll turn them on permanently onto the new system and then abandon the old line and then they will go back to work in some rate. The gas line has finished their portion of luring their system up there. The phone company has, still working on, but they're going to be behind the sidewalks, so it's not going to look the project, but still working on getting in here and putting the phone, removing the poles and putting the phone line underground on the south side, so that will be gone. And then the sewer plant, Larry, Robert and I met out there last week with our engineers to discuss the up-and-coming project for the corkscrew press and sand trap. We talked about it. We're going to postpone that for a while to give me some time to read up on all the studies that have been done over the last couple of years regarding the treatment of that so that I feel I can make a better recommendation to the city if we're proceeding in the right way. I think this is something we need to do, but I just want to make sure if we're spending $3.4 million out there that we're planning well and for any future expansions that may happen and those sites should be identified and that should be considered in the plan. So when we construct this and it's adequate enough to take those future improvements and it's located in the right spot to make that happen.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you, Pat. For those of you who haven't met Pat, Pat is director of Public Works, but he's also will be replacing Larry when he retires in a couple of weeks. So you've seen him for a long time. Thanks, Pat. Connie, anything from the city treasurer?
No.
Okay. We don't have council business tonight, first time in a long time, or resolutions or ordinances, but now we'll hear reports from our council officers, city officers, and we'll begin with Larry Bellamy.
Well, as the mayor has already alluded, this is my last council meeting as the city administrator, so we'll be handing over the reins to Patrick. I wanted to thank all the people that came tonight in support of myself and all my friends and neighbors and family. Appreciate you guys all coming. And I just want to say, I've actually been working for the city of Goldendale for 32 years.
32 years.
Some of you may not even know that I started with the city of Goldendale in 1980. And I served for four years and I served under the mayorship of Cyrus Forey and some of you may even remember Betty McKee. And so I worked, my first stint with the city of Goldendale was in about March of 1980 to January 1985. Then I started my second run in August of 1995. So in between there, I was in Anchorage, Alaska for 10 years. Anyway, I served through today, through this month. And so I've been working for the city in the second stint as city administrator for 27 years. So I've served under four mayors and I don't know how many council members.
We're your favorite though, right?
No, you are my favorite. We're the last. And not only have we had regular council meetings, but we've had committee meetings and special council meetings and executive sessions. But I do this all because Goldendale is my home and I'm happy to serve the citizens of the city of Goldendale. So thank you to the elected officials and the many employees who have worked over the years for the city of Goldendale. Connie, very much appreciate your work with me over the many years that we've both served in our respective positions. But I also want to give a shout out to the employees who have, over the years, been very dedicated and have provided a great service to this community. So I appreciate all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You've been an incredible, incredible city administrator.
I kept telling the mayor, he's got to hire a police department to keep you from retiring.
We'll go on now to our council members. We'll start with Dave Chalmers.
Oh, thanks, Mayor. Well, yeah, thanks. I just wanted to thank everyone who worked to make Community Days such a great time. Larry's been doing that for so many years and really appreciate that, Larry. And the Time Capsule event was well-attended, mission accomplished there. Glad that's over. So thanks to the Time Capsule. I'm glad it's over because I want to move on to something new now. Anyways, thanks to the great committee that we had that put that on and all the volunteers that worked on Community Days. If you didn't get a chance to check out the contents of the 1972 capsule, it's on display right now at the library, so you can go in there and check that out. It'll be there for a while, I don't know how long. If you want to check out what was put in the new Time Capsule, Community Days 2072, that's where you'll want to be for that. But we did make, we had about 80 different submissions for that new Time Capsule, so we stuffed it to the brim from all over the community. So thanks to everybody who contributed, thanks for the new Time Capsule. If you go to the Chamber of Commerce's website, you can watch a video that shows the new Time Capsule being filled and it's pretty cool. But if you really want to know everything that's in it, we're not telling.
Right.
Anyways, and congrats to Larry and Connie on your retirement, you know, been a pleasure working with you this last year. Congrats to Larry for fulfilling his grand marshal duties at the Community Days Parade. He, I'm pleased to report that he brought enough candy to last through the entire route. Lots of people make the mistake of blowing all their candy, you know, on the first half of the parade and then getting booed. And that didn't happen, so good job there. That's all, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations to Larry and Connie on your upcoming retirement. It's really a pleasure working with you.
I have a few things. I actually wrote something for Larry and Connie just because I'm better at writing things down. I have served on the Goldendale City Council for 11 years, nearly 11 years. For nearly 11 years, I've constantly learned how to be a city council member and learning about city government, what to say at city council meetings, what not to say, what to bring up, what not to bring up. And for nearly 11 and a half years, or nearly 11 years, excuse me, I've turned to one person for a question, that's Larry. Larry, it's been a true honor serving on the Goldendale City Council with you as our city administrator. Thank you for your hard work, your dedication to Goldendale, your guidance, and thank you for helping all the current city council members and all the past that had all the questions. I know countless text messages and phone calls and emails, it's just, you know.
I just dropped in on it.
Yeah, there you go. Yep. This, of course, is not really a goodbye, it's a see you around, congratulations on retirement. Connie, congratulations on retirement, thank you for all your hard work and dedication to the city of Goldendale. It's been appreciated by everyone and congratulations on your retirement. Next thing I have, Goldendale Pride is next weekend or this coming Saturday. We're kicking it off with a Pride Walk starting at the Courthouse lawn and walking to the Dirty Cowherd where the Pride event will be at 6 o'clock. All are welcome, there's going to be food, prizes, giveaways, and it's going to be a fun night.
Thank you. Thank you. Malon Wallen.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I want to also commend Larry and Connie for their retirement. And I know that I've been, I go down the street, on Columbus Street, many times on weekends and I see Larry's vehicle parked here in front, so I know.
Too bad.
Okay, well, yeah, I can, I'll look at it. Compliment him on it, you know. So anyway, I just want to, again, it was a pleasure working with you, Larry, and I know we've done a lot of projects together and a lot of tours and whatever, so anyway. One other, one item too is, I don't know if I'll talk to you or else I'll talk to Pat, are we still going to be able to have an airport meeting sometime? I know we're kind of crunched on time, but.
We talked about that and we need to have something, we need to talk, when would we like to do that?
Okay, all right, yeah, right. Is there any other meetings coming up that, you know, we were talking about at the Public Works and then our ordinance?
I don't have anything planned, so unless you guys have something that you'd like me to.
Not really, I just kind of work on my own schedule a lot too, so, yeah, right.
You don't want a meeting every week?
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Malon. Thank you.
Poor Larry, we'll send him a patrol car.
So if you see Larry in a patrol car, it's just the right of the city hall.
That's what they want, yeah.
It's a piece in the front.
Yeah, he's in the front.
And under Mayor's remarks, I have a couple of things. There's no way in the world I'll ever be able to thank Larry enough for all he's done for the city. Every mayor has had the same message, it's astounding. I got brave enough one day to look at his job description and broke out in a cold sweat and was so thankful to be mayor, you don't have to do all that stuff. If it wasn't for Larry, I'd be, if it wasn't for Larry, I'd never, ever thought to try this at all. The other thing, during the Time Capsule event, there was a scavenger hunt, just limited to children, which I was really appreciative about, and the winner was to be mayor for the day. And Emily Bartholomew won and you'll meet her on the first of August at the council.
Thought you were going to do it the first of August.
Oh, we are?
Yeah.
Yeah, we tweeted that that way. Emily is seven and her mother asked her, well, you know, what did you want to do on mayor for the day? And she said, everything. We're working on a list, but maybe a little bit overkill. The other thing is to let everyone know that there'll be an open house for both Connie and Larry. This is on the Wednesday, the 27th of July, 7, 27, from 1:00 to 3:00. There'll be cake and things to drink and just a good time to visit with Larry and remember different experiences you had, different things that he's done for you. The city will be appreciative just forever, so many different things, Larry. I've seen them up close and they're great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And we'll go now to public comment. And if there's anybody here for public comment, there's a three-minute limit. Roger?
You know, we in the media have a special relationship with people that we report on and sometimes it's rocky and sometimes it's fun, but with those two, Larry and Connie has always been top-notch professional. They are representing the city every possible best way they can. They always answer the question, they go through extra length to make sure that we have the information we need to keep the public informed. So I want to salute you both as the very best of Goldendale. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. That was very, very funny. Anyone else here for public comment? I see a daughter standing up.
It's going to be short.
Be nice.
Hey, everybody, so I'm Kylie Barnes, Larry's daughter, and we all just wanted to be here tonight to say congratulations to my dad and for reference, I'm 31 years old and he served the community of Goldendale for 32 years. So in my life, this is the only place I've known that he worked. And as everybody else said, and it's really fun to hear this about your own dad, how he led with all these awesome qualities and of course, we've seen that too with integrity, loyalty, staying in this one city of Goldendale for a very long time, all the projects that have been completed and just being somebody that is, somebody you can count on that's going to get the job done, that is going to be level-headed and be able to do this job in the best way possible. So something that I also thought was really amazing just to see and it's something that he's taught me is, as a leader, you want to be the first to serve and the last to be served. And so so many times, you know, Christmas Eve, everybody else is ready to be gone and dad would take over for the office so that all the ladies, I mean, there's guys too, but lots of ladies, all those ladies staying, you know, as Malon said, driving up here on the weekend. He always wanted to do the very best job and so, again, the city of Goldendale was very blessed to have my dad and we are also blessed to have him as a dad and like grandpa, Papa. And just to close it out, something that my parents always taught me was that you want to leave someplace or some. to leave someplace or somewhere, or people or anything that you're doing better than you found it, and I firmly believe that my dad has left the city of Goldendale better than he found it, so thanks, Dad.
I'm turning it over. It's amazing to think that tonight is Larry's last council meeting, and my very first. I never came to a council meeting all these years, but I could tell you all about it, because I got to hear all about it. Not everything, of course, but lots of discussions, and, you know, we get home and detox a little bit and all of that, but it's really amazing. I have been talking to people about Larry's service in terms of council meetings. So we figured that 31 years, at two council meetings a month, equaled 744. Add in just one extra, only one meeting a month, which there's always more than that, while he was administrator, that's another 324, so a rough total of 1,058 meetings. He might have missed 25 or 30 of those, I mean, we basically plan our life around council meetings, so, okay, we can leave on this Tuesday, and we have to get back, and that's okay, but it's just funny because we always talk about meetings. He only got pulled over once for speeding on his way to a council meeting, and that was the second one he attended when he took the job in 1995. We had a little hot Mustang, and he came home and he goes, I was speeding on the way to the council meeting. And the officer pulled him over, and he was so new, he didn't even know who it was, and we had Alaska plates, and anyway, it was just funny, they didn't give him a ticket, but they said, you need to slow down. But he was excited to get to work. The comeback at our house always was, when somebody was looking for dad, was, where's dad? And what was it, Kylie?
In a meeting.
In a meeting. So that's kind of funny, but it just is kind of, when you think about over 1,000 meetings that he's, and he's also really good at meetings, like sometimes I get the golf course, when the meetings go really long, it just makes him crazy, because like you can get all this done in 37 minutes, and it just took an hour and a half. So I know he's good at making meetings short and getting to the point. We are truly grateful for his job, it's provided for our family, and he has dearly loved this job. I'll be very honest with you, he never complained about going to work all these years, until about a couple of months ago. And then it was like, he wasn't complaining about the work, he was just tired and ready to be retired, so just ready for someone else to steer the ship. So we thank the city of Goldendale, this is the emotional part.
We'll get there.
We love this place, it's beauty, good people, pace of life. It will always be our home in summer.
I have one quick question for Joey. Does that fit into volleyball schedule?
Yeah, well, yeah, I have two seasons left.
Oh.
And then we can leave, then stop. He'll be around for the next two falls.
Sure.
We love it here, but we like to be warm.
Anyone else for a public comment? I think this is the happiest council meeting we've ever had.
So, yeah.
That's the kind of mayor I am. No, I think many, many times we'll stop and say, well, now what could Larry do? And we have an answer. And same with Connie, Connie was my gatekeeper, she corrected me more times than I think my mom did. I have trouble staying on trails, that's why I don't go from Observatory Hill very much.
I'd give this a part. We're very grateful to all employees, and Larry said that, all employees, the mayors, the council members, all of these workers, they're like family, so it was awesome.
Thank you, thank you. And Larry, thank you ever, ever so much. I think we look back in time long from here and look back at all of the things. Larry Bellamy was a key person that drove that through, got the council on line to work on a project, a meaningful, really big project. It's been great, it's absolutely been great. Going to miss you. If we don't have others for public comment, then we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
When they say so moved, that's cheating. It's usually, it's a long statement, and they say, so moved, and then I've forgotten what the word to start with. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for being here.